We would invite all who would have left here to join us in standing for a recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. Shall we see the council meetings called order? Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You seated, please. Call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Cutler, here. Mr. Martin, Mr. McGlaughlin, here.
For the record, Councilman Martin is out of town this evening. I will now dispense with a mo— I'm sorry. I will now adjourn the motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from June 2nd, 2025. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Robb to dispense with the reading of the Journal from June 2nd, 2025. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutler, yea. Mr. McGlaughlin, yea. Mr. Robb, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea.
That motion passes. Now come to the time for public comment. If anyone has a comment they would like to make this evening to the council, you can come to the podium and state your name and address. You can either reserve time for a piece of legislation coming up later on the agenda, or if you have something you'd like to address the council, this would be the opportunity.
Hi, I'm Jane Butler, tenant, owner of drive Shelby, Ohio. And I just want to say thank you for the upcoming possible legislation that'll go into the Shelby ordinance on the four-wheeling dirt bike noise, dust. It is going to be so wonderful to be able to enjoy my backyard, have family over for barbecue's, and the grandkids playing swing set in the summertime. So, thank you, and I hope it passes, and we get that on the books in Shelby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Matt Sunfield. I'm the director for the Board of Elections. Also present is Jane Zimmerman, Deputy Director. And we're here to answer any questions when it gets to the legislation regarding the possible charter amendment. So, we will be present for any questions during that time.
Thank you. Any other comments? And now move forward then to reports from standing in special committees. Mr. McGlaughlin will be putting the report from the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Personnel Committee that last week, and I have a few items to discuss, a few literature packets. On page one, the General Fund is at $2,382,578, 2.024 million after encumbrances. It's up $349,000 for the year, but this includes a chunk of income tax collection and half the property tax. So, the balance is expected to drop as the year progresses. The 200 Fund has a slightly better balance due to the advance from the General Fund, but it is still extremely tight. The Health and Park Funds are healthy and up for the year due to the first half property tax collection. The Sued and Elected Funds are in okay shape, but the Water Fund is still struggling to keep up. It has a balance of $177,000, but luckily that is unencumbered. The Health Fund is up $387,000, but still tight. Return to page two. The wages between the General and Fire Funds are up 6% on the prior year. And then moving to page three, the total wages for all funds are also up 6%. The transfers from the main income tax funds are up to $121,000. Turning to page four, cash and investment total is $16,563,632.22. In the Sued and Roush, it just shot $245,000. And then finally on the back page, page five, the income tax collection year-to-date is May collection is $391,000, $10,000 up from last May. The total tax collections are up $330,000. That's it. Thanks for that.
Councilman McGlaughlin, are there any comments or questions for Mr. McGlaughlin in regard to his report? Nearly none. Zimmerman, I'll make a motion to—
Sure. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like the motion of the combined financial statement and cash and investment reconciliation statement dated May 31st, 2025 to be received, placed, and filed and posted to the city website.
Say.
Well, the motion by Mr. McGlaughlin and the second by Mr. Roberts, that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement dated May 31st, 2025 to be received, placed, and filed and posted to the city website. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutler, yea. Mr. McGlaughlin, yea. Mr. Robb, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea.
That motion passes. Thank you. Mr. McGlaughlin. Utilities and Streets Committee, Councilman McGlaughlin.
It's me again, Mayor. You've given the Streets Committee met last week as well, June 13th. Several items to discuss. City Council has packets, so I'm just gonna go through a little bit of this. The first issue concerning White Platte Smokestack. Smokestack's 190 feet. We have a platform at 150 feet with the utility communications antenna mounted on that platform railing. There are two options at this time of the smokestack. One, to continue with the demolition. The last quotes on the demo for the smokestacks, in 2021, we had an estimate of 310,000. In 2023, an estimate upwards to 500,000. But one of the other options is to repurpose the structure to be a decorative landmark, where we cap the top of the smokestack weatherproof, prevent the freezing and thawing effect. We do tuck plumbing in the bad areas and paint and/or light up the structure. We've contacted two chimney smokestack companies that maintain such structures, and both submitted quotes to inspect the smokestack. They would inspect the interior and exterior. Company A, their estimate was $30,000. They would physically do this to inspect the interior and exterior. Company B would use an FFA Registered Drone Pilot and Drone to inspect the interior and exterior. Their estimate was about $10,000. The repurposing of the stack would provide the community identity, preserve our history, but it comes at an expense and an ongoing expense to maintain. The recommendation for the next step is to contract with the company to inspect the structure using the drone inspection method, which is cheaper, to give some idea of the integrity of the structure. The next, I'd like the brief one, is the Battery Energy Storage System, or BES. It's a 10-megawatt battery energy storage system. The installation is completed at this time. The soft testing started last week with minimal power being discharged and charged. The hard testing will be starting next week with full power being discharged and charged. The Tesla engineers and onsite engineers are coordinating testing with the Division of Electric at this time. Additional action items still need. We are waiting on voltage regulators, which were ordered back in March of last year. We expect the delivery in August. The commercial operation is soon to be announced for this 15-year term project. Right next to our new batteries is our solar field, and so we have some panel alignment issues. The panels aren't tracking properly, so the non-tracking panels are still generating energy. They're still producing full power. So, onsite partners have hired a subcontractor to identify the problem, which has been identified. And so, the current expectation is says have the non-tracking panels resolved next month. The next issue to talk about are outstanding utility accounts. Inactive utility accounts without outstanding balances is an ongoing issue that needs our City utilities are city-owned and operated, electric, water, and sewer utilities, which are enterprising funds. Utilities are self-supporting. Taxes do not support the funds, only our collections. So, every year, tens of thousands of our dollars are going outstanding. There are frequent delinquencies from transient or renter account holders. Outstanding account, to be an example, in 2020, we had about $25,000 in outstanding dollars. In 2021, $29,000. 2022, $21,000. 2023, $32,000. So, the outstanding amounts are after subtracting the security deposits from the renter and commercial account holders. Current security deposits were established in January of 2017. Water is $150, sewer $150, electric $200. Water and sewer together, $200. Water and electric together, also $200, as well as sewer and electric together. Electric, water, and sewer combined is $300. The common action noted, the utility offices, shortly after the deposits are returned, we see an increase in delinquencies, and account holders move from the residency or close their businesses without notifying the utility office to close the account. Thoughts to help minimize the outstanding amounts are to increase the security deposits, as one example. Increasing the amounts, for example, I'm just gonna give an estimate, you know, to increase those by 50 to $100 on all those. In addition, reconnection charge. Currently, reconnection charges and reconnection fees are established 20 years ago. The cost of manpower and equipment to respond for reconnections during normal work hours and especially after normal work hours have increased over the last 20 years. So, we want to increase them as well. One more item, also the application fee. We'd like to increase for the municipal water systems. It's currently $5, and the proposed application fee is, we'd like to increase to $10. Final issue, the water treatment plant, lime softening replacement project. We're still working through the process to replace the lime with caustic soda at the plant. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. McGlaughlin, are there any comments or questions for Mr. McGlaughlin in regard to his report? Thank you, sir. Move forward then to Community and Economic Development Committee, Councilman Cutler.
We did not meet. That was a brighter week.
Yes, thank you. Notation duly. Thank you, sir. Safety Committee, Councilman Roberts.
Thanks, sir. We did meet on June 4th. The only issue that was discussed was the ordinance 18 that we will consider tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions in that brief report? Thank you, Councilman Roberts. Move forward to reports of city officials. I have no full report this evening. Since the last minute, it occupied the typical mayoral duties and delights. I did want to—have you taken note, there is before you a letter that had been submitted here from the Board of Revision and Assessments, where I am the chair, and this is in regard to the vacating of the alley, basically of the Weber's Alley. So, you can kind of course through that, and I think with that recommendation, there'll be further action from the council in their future. So, if you had any questions on that, you can ask myself or Mr. Geis in that regard. But we did meet today, so this is kind of fresh off the press. That's about the only thing under my report. I will, under New Business, be bringing the reading of the Declaration of Independence, which has been practiced and custom, and now is prescribed by statutory instructions to be read in the meeting prior to the Fourth of July. So, I will give that my best attempt under New Business. Any comments or questions for me? If not, we'll move forward to Mr. Crum, our Director of Finance.
Thanks, sir. Pretty much normal business in my department. I think tomorrow, Deputy Director McGlaughlin and I are gonna have a meeting to sort of start the switchover of our county software. So, that'll be a fun, exciting project. And, you know, Deputy Director Pollack has also been working with Matt Bowman in the Tax Department about cross-training him on some of the payrolls and the others, which is going very well. And I really appreciate both the reference on that. That's pretty much all the things in my department.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? Thank you, sir. If not, move forward to Mr. Ivester's office here, he is as well as out of town this evening. So, we come to Mr. Joe Geis, Project Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few project updates. The cruise drive St. Peter Sewer, the local business Friday at 10:00 a.m. on that. I talked to our paving contractor. He's not supposed to start until July anyhow, so it's got a late August completion date. So, he's working with his crews to figure out when they're gonna be in. They'll be in and out, a big deal there. So, Consolidated Drive, which will be flying for your two fund, there's—working with the gas company, there's an elevation issue that we're working out, so more to come on that. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? All right, Mayor, done this move to New Business. Is there any new business before we do have the reading of the Declaration of Independence? Anyone have any new business? All right, if not, I will read our Declaration of Independence in Congress from July 4th, 1776, the unanimous declaration of the 13 United States of America. When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and that nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundations on such principles and organizing its powers in such forms as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes, and accordingly, all experience has shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same objective convinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government and provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferance of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former system of government. The history of the present King of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having in direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world. He has refused his assent to laws, the most wholesome and necessary for the public good. He has forbidden his governors to pass laws of immediate and pressing importance unless suspended in their operation until his assent should be obtained, and when so suspended, he is utterly neglected to attend to them. He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people unless those people would relinquish their right of representation to the legislature, a right inestimable to them and formidable to tyrants only. He has called together legislative bodies at places unusual and uncomfortable and distant from the depository of their public records for the sole purpose of fatiguing them into compliance with his measures. He has dissolved representative houses repeatedly for opposing with manly firmness his invasions on the rights of the people. He has refused for a long time after such disillusion to cause others to be elected, whereby the legislative powers incapable of annihilation have returned to the people at large for their exercise, the state remaining in the meantime exposed to all the dangers of invasion from without and convulsions within. He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states by that purpose obstructing the laws for naturalization of foreigners, refusing to pass others to encourage their migrations hither, and raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands. He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws for establishing judiciary powers. He has made judges dependent on his will alone for the tenure of their offices and the amount and payment of their salaries. He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance. He has kept among us in times of peace standing armies without the consent of our legislators. He has affected to render the military independent of and superior to civil power. He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our Constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to their acts of pretended legislation. For quartering large bodies of armed troops among us, for protecting them by a mock trial from the punishment for any murders which they should commit on the inhabitants of these states, for cutting off our trade with all parts of the world, for imposing taxes on us without our consent, for depriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury, for transporting us beyond seas to be tried for pretended offenses, for abolishing the free system of English laws in a neighboring province, establishing therein an arbitrary government, and enlarging its boundaries so as to render it at once an example and fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule into these colonies, for taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws, and altering fundamentally the form of our governments, for suspending our own legislatures and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever. He has advocated government here by declaring us out of his protection and waging war against us. He has plundered our seas, ravished our coasts, burnt our towns, and destroyed the lives of our people. He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete the works of death and desolation and tyranny already begun with circumstances of cruelty and perfidy scarcely parallel in the most barbarous ages and totally unworthy of the head of a civilized nation. He has constrained our fellow citizens, taking captive on high seas, to bear arms against their country, to become the executioners of their friends and brethren, or to fall themselves by their hands. He has excited domestic insurrections amongst us, and has endeavored to bring on the inhabitants of our frontiers, the merciless Indian savages, whose known rule of warfare is an indistinguish destruction of all ages, sexes, and condition. In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress in the most humble terms. Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. Nor have we been wanting in attentions to our British brethren. We have warned them from time to time of attempts by their legislature to extend an unwarrantable jurisdiction over us. We have reminded them of the circumstances of our immigration and settlement here. We have appealed to their native justice and magnanimity, and we have conjured them by the ties of our common kindred to disavow these usurpations, which would inevitably interrupt our connections and correspondence. They too have been deaf to the voice of justice and of consanguinity. We must therefore acquiesce in the necessity which denounces our separation and hold them as we hold the rest of mankind, enemies in war, in peace friends. We, therefore, the representatives of the United States of America in general Congress, assembled, appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, do in the name and by the authority of the good people of these colonies, solidly publish and declare that these united colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states, that they are absolved from all allegiances to the British Crown, and that all political connections, connections between them and the State of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved, and that is free and independent states. They have the full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and to do all other acts and things which independent states may or might do. For the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Declaration of Independence.
Good job, Mayor.
All right. I think that takes us to unfinished business. We do have on the agenda the smokestack, but we also have a report by Mr. McGlaughlin on the smokestack. I think we're in the process of getting an inspection and see where that takes us as the future of the smokestack, repurposing, demolition, wherever that takes us. There'll be more to come on this issue. So, I think we have things underway. I want to thank Mr. Zimmerman for doing a lot of the labor on that. Any other unfinished business? The files. Move forward then to legislation.
Ordinance number 11, 2025. Determining that certain real property owned by the City of Shelby be sold and designating the Community Improvement Corporation of Shelby, Ohio, Inc. as the city's agent in the sale of said real property.
Move forward, Mr. Roberts. Second.
Okay. I note, I have Mr. Roberts for the first. I think Mr. Cutler goes second on that. For the third reading of this ordinance, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutler, yea. Mr. McGlaughlin, yea. Mr. Robb, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea.
Order number 11, 2025, passes its third reading.
Who passes the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Cutler for the passage of ordinance number 11, 2025. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutler, yea. Mr. McGlaughlin, yea. Mr. Robb, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea.
Order number 11, 2025, passes.
Ordinance number 12, 2025. Amending Chapter 1042 Sewer Regulations, Section 1042.15, Limitations on Wastewater Strength, C., Local Limits of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move forward, Mr. Roberts. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cutler for the third reading of ordinance number 12, 2025. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutler, yea. Mr. McGlaughlin, yea. Mr. Robb, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea.
Order number 12, 2025, passes its third reading.
Move for passage of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cutler for the passage of ordinance number twelve, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Order number twelve, two thousand twenty-five passes.
Ordinance number thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, amending section ten forty-four point one hundred, setage receiving rate and fee schedule, chapter ten forty-four, sewer charges of the codified ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for the reading. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cutler for the third reading of ordinance number thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Order number thirteen, two thousand twenty-five passes its third reading.
Move for passage of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cutler for the third reading of ordinance number thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Did I say reading? For the passage of ordinance number thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? This is for passage. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Order number thirteen, two thousand twenty-five passes.
Ordinance number fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, proposing an amendment to section fifty-three of the Charter of the City of Shelby and submitting such proposed amendment to the electors.
Move for the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. McGlocklin for the first reading of ordinance number fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, and before we start the discussion, I do want everyone to take note that the two-thirds majority elected is required to keep this moving forward, so just make that notation. It's a vote of four, need a discussion. Mr. McGlocklin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, this ordinance here is for a proposed charter amended. As you said, it needs the passage by all four of us tonight to move forward to the second reading. I sponsored this legislation last year, and it failed last year by a three to two vote because it needs four. Mr. Robb was not here last week, so we postponed till tonight to give Mr. Robb a chance to get his input on the issue. I also invited two representatives from the Board of Elections, Mr. Matt Finfield and Gene Zimmerman, to speak with us tonight to give us a refresher as to why this ordinance is good for the citizens of Shelby.
The council would like to hear that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman McGlocklin, the council. So we're here to ask council to put the charter amendment forth to the voters. Currently, it's a seventy-five day filing deadline for Shelby. Candidates Shelby issues have a ninety-day filing deadline, which is what the rest of the county has. So we're just asking it to be consistent with not only the county, but also with when Shelby issues have to file. I think one of the biggest things to keep in mind here, though, is it's not just about us, okay? Shelby voters are disenfranchised because the law reads that if you want to protest a candidate's petition, you have to do that by the close of business of the seventy-fourth day, okay? So the issue comes in, when your filing deadline is the seventy-fifth day, and our board doesn't meet till the following day, there is no time for Shelby residents to ever challenge a candidate's petition. So I guess my question would be, do you want to be proactive and put that question forth to the voter, or do you want to be reactive and wait until that situation whatever arise and someone wants to challenge a petition? We don't have that due process that all seventy thousand plus other county residents have. And your Shelby residents do have that right in even your election because, you know, we're filed on a ninety-day filing deadline. So that's something that's very important. Why would a petition be challenged? It could be a residency question. Maybe that person says they live there, but someone knows they have two homes, and their main home is not in Shelby. It could be someone circulated a petition, but that's not who signed the circulation of the petition, and maybe one of the signers is aware of that. There's many reasons why a petition can be challenged, and like I said, it's not a big deal until one is to be challenged and the resident doesn't have that right to challenge that petition.
You summed it up pretty well. I mean, when we process these petitions, it is checked thoroughly. We take it extremely seriously. We follow the law, which when you guys are circulating petitions, you do too, and if by chance there is an error, a citizen may not have a chance to bring it to our attention or to challenge that, and that is significant. That happened, but we're trying to be proactive in that case. Everything else that Shelby does goes by revised code, the filings, the signatures, issues, everything goes by revised code. The only thing that's different is the deadline, and with that deadline being pushed back on the entire rest of the county, you're taking that right of the Shelby citizens to challenge a petition.
Mr. Robb.
There's also a financial side to this, isn't there? There's a cost issue?
Well, we generally try to make anything work. We do have to delay ballot layout until we get the certifications. We do have the board that meets to certify the candidates that file the ninety days, and then our board would have to meet again to certify the candidates that file for Shelby. So there's a dual cost there, but we do have to delay production of our ballots in order because we don't know how the layout's going to be.
Mr. Robb.
The last time this came up, and I'm just going to repeat what I said last time, this proposed amendment to the Charter should be left to the voters. It should not be to us to make that decision for them. I trust the voters in Shelby, and I trust they'll do what they think is right for them. So I would support this proposed amendment with my vote tonight.
Mr. McGlocklin.
I can't think of any issue where this would negatively impact the Shelby voters, only positively. For example, you know, by shifting it backwards by two weeks, somebody that takes on a petition still has one year to get their signatures in. So, you know, that doesn't change on this end. It just allows our voters, our constituents, two weeks versus two days to challenge.
And that's piggybacking on that as a councilman McGlocklin said, they can pull petitions a year. Signatures are good for a year. We have people that have pulled for May of twenty-six already.
We can't file.
Yes, so you can do that. So you do have a lot of time, and a lot of times it's much nicer to go get your signatures when the weather's nice as opposed to in mid-December, so.
I just want to piggyback on what Councilman Robb said, too. You know, ultimately, we're just moving us on to the voters, and they're making the final decision, so I would leave it up to them to make that decision.
Any others coming? Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
All right, you ready for a roll call vote on ordinance number fifteen, two thousand twenty-five? Mr. Cutler.
Yeah.
Hang on a second. I'm speaking to the crowd, and you're going to say Mr. Robb.
I'm looking at you, I'm talking.
All right.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Order number fifteen, two thousand twenty-five passes its first reading.
Ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty-five, amending chapter ten forty water, section ten forty four oh four, rules, regulations, and fixed charges for municipal water system H. Additional charges to consumers outside city limits, Rule forty-five, codified ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for the second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cutler for the second reading of ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Order number seventeen, two thousand twenty-five passes its second reading.
Ordinance number eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, amending chapter four forty-six, snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles, and all purpose vehicles of the codified ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for the first reading. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cutler for the first reading of ordinance number eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Mr. Cutler.
I'm curious of what's being amended on this.
This is an enactment of an entire section of this chapter, so the chief could speak to it. Would you care to maybe speak a little bit of the etymology of all of this as we kind of walk through it? Or would you not care to speak? Come on up. If it pleases council, police department encounters things, Councilman Robb, you don't understand all this, that we encounter things, and sometimes there's not a real objective measurement of what is right and wrong, what is going against ordinance or with ordinance, and I'm not going to put words in the chief's mouth, but this has more measurable dynamics to it to help us, as if you read all the where it has, it lays out the case for it, because we're a small town, there's small lots, and so this is an enactment, so chief going to take it from there.
The City of North Royalton has a very, very similar section to ours in that entire section that covers all of these vehicles and special vehicle operations. We have had a number of complaints regarding various types of pollution, noise, dust, other issues as it relates to residents riding these types of vehicles on their own private property and creating disturbances. The mayor wrote to me, we looked at a number of ordinances, and none of our current ordinances fit. There is a noise ordinance, but it's very, very subjective in that what might be allowed to me may not be allowed to you and vice versa. So we needed to have something that was a little bit more objective. I'm not even sure if you found it, but the City of North Royalton enacted several years ago a subsection within their subsections that you see in front of you. There were very few modifications to it, in fact, I don't think any. I did talk to their police chief and asked why this was enacted. It was enacted for the same reasons that we are, and they use it frequently, but as an enforcement tool, you know, this is one of those things that we do a lot where we go out, provide people a copy of the ordinance, discuss it with them, give them a warning, and then only repeated violations do we issue citations. There's an escalator in here, so originally it's only minor misdemeanor if we have to issue a summons for that, but it does go up to a fourth degree and a third degree misdemeanor for subsequent violations. It's, it is something that passage of this ordinance would give us the teeth to do something that is clearly defined. I think it's a well-written ordinance. North Royalton has had no revisions to it, and they said they use it all the time.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep, thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Robb.
Yeah, I hate to have to tell people what they can and can't do on their own property. But we have situations, not just one, a few in town, where what people do on their property is affecting other people. It is just, you know, it's out of control. It's not just a little bit. I was surprised when we, I said earlier, we discussed this at the committee meeting, I was surprised at the number of calls that were sent out there for this particular reason in this one, you know, one specific area. So, you know, like I said, I hate to have to be able to tell people what they can and can't do on their own property, but, I mean, this situation is, you know, it gets worse, and it's not just one section, it's not just one area down. Now it seems to be up to four sections down. It's just going to happen. So I think that, you know, this is a good situation.
I should probably say that this doesn't prohibit it, it just sets some guidelines. It sets hours of operation, number of vehicles that can be operated, and proximity to other residents to tamp that down.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cutler.
I will say I like how it does carve out some intentions, things like snowfalling and things of that nature would be acceptable, so that's, you know, I kind of look by the philosophy of one's person's rights in when they affect the rights of another person. So better be in this legislation.
All right, any other further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Order number eighteen, two thousand twenty-five passes its first reading.
Ordinance number nineteen, two thousand twenty-five, amending chapter four fifty-two parking generally of the codified ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for the second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cutler for the first reading of ordinance number nineteen, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Mr. Cutler.
So I assume the things that are changing on here, the perks of being repealed?
Chief, let me call upon you.
I don't have a final copy of what the law director presented to council, so I can't necessarily speak to what you have in front of you. This is the third and final batch of ordinances as a result of the parking committee's work. So there are some that are repeal, there are some that are modified, in particular, I hope you have four fifty-two point one three in front of you, parking oversized And then there is also a change in snow emergencies on streets, and that is a result of some extensive conversations with our service department, who does probably, in my opinion, the best job of snow removal in the area. They had some issues and concerns about things that could make their job a little bit easier when we had heavy snowfall. That would include interior parking, so there'd be snow. Right now, our snow emergency only affects the central business district. This would expand that to boulevards, cul-de-sacs, and then to collective streets, which are Smiley Avenue from the west to the east corporation limit and Shelby Avenue from Smiley Estate. It also changes the snow emergencies in municipal parking lots, and that provides a specific definition so that we get some signage up there. It lacks signage in all the municipal lots, and we want to create some signage on the, hopefully, on the traffic committee so we can get those properly marked and get vehicles out there and remove them. Currently, the ordinance allows for it, but there's no signage and it needed a little bit of sprucing up, so. It does remove the parking or stopping and fire or snow removal lanes. Interesting story behind that, Project Coordinator found the original legislation that established those lanes, and essentially where we have no parking signs on our streets is a result of those determinations where a fire lane should be, and that is already handled by the Traffic Commission. It also includes parking violation waivers within the ordinance and for the, for violations that did not occur before, it also provides a new all-inclusive event permit so that instead of having one set of permits approved by the mayor for blocking sidewalks, immediately one for parades and assemblies, there's one ordinance that covers it all. I would receive those, review them, they would be issued by the mayor, not me. There's a repeal of taxi cab stands and bus stops. Those things can be done through the Traffic Commission, and repealing the parking in other ways, that's redefined in the definitions in the first batch of those ordinances. The most important- The most important ones, I think you should consider and probably discuss, is the parking oversized vehicles, if you're going to discuss, and the change into the snow emergency, emergency snow.
That's an excellent move. Thank you, Chief. And maybe why is it that this first reading, as Councilman Cutler alluded to, seeing what changes have been by comparing it to the existing, the additions and deletions and modifications? There's a lot, a lot of hours have gone into this, and the chief has part along with the guys for sale and the law director.
And the parking committee.
And the parking.
Had a lot of input, especially in that parking oversized vehicles. I think that's an ordinance that's modified, adapted from the city of Mansfield, and I think it addresses a number of issues that I know that Joe and I deal with a lot as it relates to oversized vehicles and oversized trailers parked on the street.
Mr. Cutler.
So, yeah, the oversized vehicle thing, I read over there, that's kind of a no-brainer really. But I did have a couple of questions about municipal parking. I mean, would you want to include, is the Black Fork Commons considered parking or a street on that classified? Would that want to be, would you want to put that in there? What about the parking of newly acquired football field? So the only thing that we dealt with were specifically those that are designated municipal parking lots. The snow removal would still be included in that new area because it's in the central business district, and I think we would have to wait and see if there is a parking area that's completed specifically for municipal parking once that development is done, once CIC is done with that development and it turns into whatever it turns into. But we did want to identify specifically where those lots are. The other big part to this is we have limited downtown parking. And one of the major issues is the length that people park on the streets. That, I think, once these are complete, is something that we'll propose at traffic commission and have a broader discussion from a bunch of different disciplines. By identifying these needy lots in a physical way, my hope is, is that we can get some wayfinding, some signs, some other ways that people know when they visit Shelby, there are other places to park that are within walking distance of where they need to go. That's the reason why they're defined. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. Further discussion? All right, you're ready for a roll call vote on ordinance number 19, 2025. Mr. Crum.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Order number 19, 2025 passes its first reading.
Resolution number 21, 2025, adopting an annual revenue budget for the year 2026.
Move for resolution taken in the past.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cutler for the passage of resolution number 21, 2025. Discussion? Mr. Crum.
Gentlemen, this is essentially the first step in our budgeting and appropriations for 2026. This is sort of a first draft, I guess, of what we think we will bring in on the revenue side next year. This will get amended as we see fit, and then at the beginning of 2026, we'll sort of make a final copy of this and then base our appropriations off of that. Most of these numbers are based off of a sort of a projection between last year's revenue numbers, how we see things going this year, and if we project any changes from next year based on grants or whatnot that may happen. So that's what it is. If anybody has any questions about any numbers, let me know.
Or if we can get property diets next year.
That's true. Like I said, this could be amended.
Any further discussion? I believe Councilman Gates used to refer to this as the crystal ball resolution, gazing into the crystal ball and placing some figures and we voted for it. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Resolution number 21, 2025 passes. Not going to dislaze this business, any dislaze this business, do we run before council? Councilman McGlocklin.
I'm going to agree, John.
We have a motion by Mr. McGlocklin and a second by Mr. Roberts for adjournment. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
That motion passes. Council adjourned at 7:55. Thank you.